We'll be getting the regular scheduled city meeting. Call it to order.
Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
President.
Mayor, alternate mayor pretend Bobby Carrillo, Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
President.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez, Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
President.
And Commissioner Isa Flores.
President.
We do have a courtroom.
Most excuse. Have some members?
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
motion carries.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. God, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our citizenship, our leadership, our customers, our workforce, and our business. May we always be mindful of their service. We confess that we are nothing without you and our trust is in you completely. Amen.
Under proclamations, we have a proclamation proclaiming September 19th, 2023 as National IT Professionals Day.
Good afternoon, Dr. Flores, City Commission. Again, I would like to take this time to first and foremost, thank you all for the recognition. And I'm gonna have some of our staff members here join us. We do have a pretty good-sized IT staff from our systems teams, from our fiber teams, from our customer service team, from our cybersecurity teams, and from our networking team, right? So if you all can kinda walk to the front, please, so you all can be recognized. So again, we do have a big team and this is not half of them. But again, we do strive to make sure, well, I guess, sure. The camera's in the front, sorry guys.
There you go.
We'll take the picture and look at the audience here shortly. But just wanted to say, you know, this is the team that makes it happen. This is the team, you know, it's not me, right? It's really this, these individuals that, you know, we have very talented, very sharp, very smart employees. And again, they all do the same awesome customer service that we ask of everybody. And again, this is just a little recognition, you know, it's a national day of IT professionals and just letting them know that we're here for everybody. You know, we used to be just here for our staff members, but again, now we are here for every citizen, right? With teamfar.net, internet, you know, we are available to help anybody. So, thank you.
Before we read the proclamation, I just wanna thank you guys because I know we've asked you guys to fulfill a big task in the past couple of years, getting this broadband together. And I know this is a team that's been getting it done. And so I, for myself and I'm sure for the rest of the commission, thank you very much. We know it's been a big, big journey and we're almost there. So, thank you very much for what you all have done. Thank you. Who's got the?
Before I get any, I just thank you, said what Commissioner Bobby said. So, thank you for, it's a big job you guys have been doing. Whereas at one time, business could exist even excel with a big chief tablet and a pencil. And for people who don't know what a big chief is, that was the standard when you went to school in elementary. You know, you carry your big chief and your pencil to school. And that was a big deal. I still remember mine, so. And whereas the big chief tablet gave way to Lotus 123 spreadsheet and the pencil became a dot matrix printer. And whereas technology evolved to include mainframes and microcomputers, mini computers and personal computers, iPads, iPhones, Androids, and Blackberries. And whereas government and specifically City of FAR has embraced technology with courts and jails, emergency services, law enforcement, engineers, clerks, attorneys, judges, and accountants, human resources and others, not only embracing but becoming dependent upon technology. Whereas behind every technology stands often silent and invisible IT professionals, i.e. the technicians, analysts, developers, architects, engineers, administrators, managers, and directors, and others who have been content to work behind the scenes and enable innovation and productivity. And whereas this FAR City Commission wished to show their appreciation for and celebrate the accomplishments of City of FAR technology professionals and encourage all City of FAR employees and residents to celebrate and honor and be gentle with the IT professionals. Now therefore, I, Ramiro Caballero, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in him and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 as National IT Professional Day. Congratulations. Thank you all.
The big picture.
Now you guys can turn. Now you guys can.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll see how we can squeeze in here. This is just a copy. This is the door again.
All right, next we have a proclamation proclaiming September 23rd, 2023 as Shriners Legion of Honor and Veterans Day.
The Shriners could please come to the front, please.
Good afternoon, City Commissioners. I'd like to introduce our Commander for the Legions of Honor, Lieutenant, retired, retired Colonel Glaze Kirk, Skip Kirkland, and myself is Gilbert Medina.
Welcome.
I'd like to express my deep appreciation for you taking the time to give us this proclamation today because it's very important to the Shriners that we keep in tune with all of our surroundings.
And thank you all for all what you all do and do for the community and for everyone around. We really greatly appreciate that.
We also having a military ball.
Yes, we have a military ball here that's scheduled for the 23rd of September. We're having a welcoming committee at 5:30 to about 6:30 and then we're gonna sit down and eat. And we're having some dignitaries coming in from out of state. As to represent all people who serve, but you don't have to be a past military person to come to the ball because it's for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the invitations. I really appreciate that.
I'd like to present you the flyer.
Yes, sir. Definitely, just, yes, sir, definitely.
Thank you.
I have more if you'd like to.
No, I think that's what we'll do, we'll pass it amongst us. Unless you have a couple more, then we can leave some for everybody else. About three more or four more would be great.
Okay.
Yes, sir, definitely. There, right there.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of those, no, one of these will include the mayor.
Where's that?
We did mail a letter to the mayor several weeks ago and invited him to it. And for anybody that wish to attend.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Proclamation states, whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history. And whereas the City of FAR has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much in the defense of the freedoms which we all continue to enjoy. And whereas Americans have an abiding faith in the ideals and strengths of which our great nation was founded, in our domestic process and in the men and women of the armed forces who have served our country so well. And whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of the people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. Whereas the Shriners Legion of Honor Veterans will be having a military ball honoring and saluting our veterans on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023 at the Nomad Shrine Club located at 1044 West Nolana Loop in FAR, Texas. Now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, do by virtue of the authority vested in him and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim September 23rd, 2023 as Shriners Legions of Honor Veterans Day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, please.
All three?
All three of you. These other guys come out of pictures all the time. I signed the other one. Don't keep the other ones, yeah. Thank you for the service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Next, we have a proclamation proclaiming September 25th, 2023 as National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims.
Thank you for having me. My name is Robert Garcia, the founder of the Real Grand Valley Family and Friends of Murdered Children. As you all know, September 13th of 2011, my brother was murdered in a murder-suicide in Hardinjin, Texas. At that point, I reached out. There was no services in the valley. So, we got affiliated with National Parents of Murdered Children at Cincinnati, Ohio. And now, after 12 years, we have learned seven things with the mothers that are present with me and family members that are present with me. Love never dies. A shared bond unspeakable with the national partner of organization of mothers, of parents, of national parents of murdered children. We grieve for a lifetime together. We aged together. Every time we see a picture, when we started this journey in 2011 to now, pictures don't lie. You really aged from hair to ojeras to a different, I mean, it just really has had a toll on us. To my extended familia, our support group members, I will never leave you in this journey of grief and seeking justice. We call the empty chair the space that never will always be empty during the holidays, birthdays, without our loved ones. Because I know deep sorrow, the meaning of it. But I also recognize the unspeakable love and living un dia la vez. So I bow my head to each of my support group members that are here with us in attendance. And the ones that could not attend this proclamation, and I say, thank you. Thank you and thank you for showing me the unconditional love and bond. Para mi madrecita que esta en el cielo, Dale Garcia, once told me before she passed, and my inspiration in this journey on the promise that I told her that I would keep my brother memory alive. Mi hijo, mi vida me ha cambiado. My life has changed on that September 13th of 2011. I cannot explain the pain and the void that I have in my heart and nobody would ever understand my void unless you are a mother of a murdered child. As I represent and advocate with my moms and members of my extended family, I read their names. Joliza Rahel, Julio Villarreal, Fernando Garza Jr., Magalena and Rebecca Cantú, Javier Xavier Avitia, Jonathan Alcanar, Ángel Guadalupe Franco, Roberto Méndez, and Alejandra Orneales. As their parents, and Wendy Escobedo, as their parents and loved ones are here with us on this occasion. And I just want to, on behalf of them and my entire board and all the partners that we have that FAR has been the leader in this since 2015. And without Ambrosio and the commission, this journey would not be possible every 25th. And there are about five members here from the City of FAR, residents that their loved ones were murdered from the age of 17 all the way to the age of 45. So with that, thank you for this opportunity to be here with you and the proclamation and the continued support that you all have entrusted us to provide a community service to the community.
On behalf of the commission of the mayor, I know the mayor's not here today, but I just want to send my condolences. I know there's, no words can fulfill the emptiness that you are feeling in your hearts. The only thing I can say is something they told me a long time ago. They're only gone when you forget them.
Amen.
That's something my dad told me years ago and I'd like to extend that to you all. Know that their love, your love for them, keeps them alive in spirit. So, we'll be reading off this proclamation for you all.
Whereas the National Parents of Murdered Children, the POMC, established September 25th as National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims as a result of unanimously passed resolutions by the US Senate on October 16th, 2007, and the US House of Representatives on May 14th, 2007. And whereas the National Parents of Murdered Children, the POMC, believe that honoring the memory of victims who have been killed by violence and acknowledging the resulting long-term trauma for families and communities. This National Remembrance Day is an essential way of promoting public awareness and remembering our loved ones. And whereas in 2022, an estimated 2,017 homicides occurred in Texas and over 20,170 close relatives were affected. The Real Grand Valley experienced about 40 murders and 400 close relatives were affected. And whereas survivors of homicide transformed their pain and anger into power and action by honoring the memory of their loved ones impacted by the homicide. Through leadership, grief support, and advocacy, survivors are reducing violence and promoting prevention and policy change on a local, state, and national level. And whereas we urge all citizens of FAR and Hidalgo County to join the 11th Annual Candlelight Visual, always on our minds and in our hearts, to be hosted at the Pepe Salinas Memorial Recreation Center from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on September 25th, 2023. Now therefore, I, Michael Pacheco, in representation of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the 25th Day of September 2023 as a National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims.
Thank you.
We can applaud.
A little to this side, please. Yep. All ready? One, two, three, one more. Thank you.
Do we have any public testimony?
Yes, we have Mr. Pedro Garcia. He's gonna speak on agenda item 9B. He's with the FAR Community Theater.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you very much. I'm Pedro Garcia, artistic director and co-founder of FAR Community Theater Company since 2008. We are now going in our 16th year and we'd like to thank the city leaders, city administration, and all the citizens of FAR for your support of the arts. And we had a good year and we continue producing theater productions and classes in the arts. And we have a bunch of people that come to see our productions and also to be a part of our technical crew and cast. And we like that we're providing to the quality of life of the City of FAR. And we certainly are very appreciative of everything that you all do to help and support us. Lastly, if at ever time, there would be an interest in speaking of the development of a South Texas Cultural Arts Center, a state-of-the-art here in the City of FAR, I would be more than interested to participate in those kinds of discussions. And again, thank you very much. We appreciate it. My door is open. If anybody ever wants to contact me and talk to us, my board of directors and myself, you're always welcome at FAR Community Theater Company, where dreams go far. Gracias.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anybody for a public hearing? Nobody? Okay. Under City Manager's report, we have the submission of sales tax collection report for September 2023. This one shows a 1.54% of year-to-date true growth compared to last year and a 2.68% growth compared to last month. If you guys have any questions, it's in your packet. God is here to answer if you guys have any questions on that. You're good? At this time, I'm gonna call UD up to discuss the video you're gonna... Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, we have Andrew Cannon in here from the RGV MPO with a presentation. Apologize.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Appreciate being here, City Manager. Andrew Cannon with the exec, with the executive, Andrew Cannon, Executive Director of the RGV MPO, here to talk to you about some great news that came out of Austin. August 16th, TechStar passed the largest 10-year financial program that they've ever passed before up in Austin. So, I'm making the rounds to try to share that good news and also do a little emphasis on the local areas and the governments, the cities, the county of what is prosperous to them and has been prosperous to them previously. Thank you. Through that program, so that's what I'm here to share with you today. Briefly, please feel free to ask me any questions and I hope I got this right. I do. I think most of you are aware of the MPO, but for those who may be new to us, we are the planning organization that works with TechStar and the federal government on all transportation plans in a two-and-a-half county region. We take in about half of Starr County, 3,000 square miles, give or take, and about 1.8 million people in total under our planning horizon that we work with on a regular day, on a regular day. So, something pretty exciting is that the budget that was approved on August 16th was $142 billion for transportation, the highest it's ever been. Some of the high points for that that I think are really exciting is that 54% of that budget was state-funded. A lot of that from Prop 1 and Prop 7 that voters voted on several years ago through a constitutional amendment allowing oil taxes at the spigot, additional dollars from sales, car sales tax revenue to go over to transportation, as well as there's a shift of rainy day funds. Once it reaches a certain level, they shift over the extra rainy day funds that they have over to transportation. There's $7.5 billion in that program for preventive maintenance. So, we're pretty happy to see that. And about 9,000 total projects. Within that, just hitting a high area for us, about $556 million in what we call Category 2, which is directly TechStar funds that come through our area that the Board and Mayor Hernandez, being a member of, approves. And just one of those projects that we do have, the I-69 connector, to connect I-69C and I-69E somewhere, because I don't, I don't want your phones to ring, but somewhere in the Monte Cristo area. There's no preferred alignment yet. That's a very important project because it would essentially, in the future, connect up with what would be the Outer Parkway or the Outer Loop in the Hardinjin-San Benito area, which we hope would eventually connect to the Second Causeway over to the island. So that would provide a second means of traveling to the island once all those projects are complete without having to go down to 100 or 550 to make your way over to SPI. So we're very excited that there's $150 million on that project identified to try to get that moving forward. One project, oh, that's just some of the preferred alignments that are shown. Nothing's finalized yet. It's very early in the phases, but for the environmental process, some alignments have to be identified. And then Category 7, $329 million of that allocated. And that comes directly through the MPO that the Policy Board votes on. $25 million, give or take, on Nolana Loop and then the South Parallel Corridor, six point, almost 6.8 million in the Cameron County area, just to name a few on projects. Right now, we have 52 projects that are funded through the Category 7 process moving forward on this program. Category 9, just a little illustration there for you of something that my staff can do if you ever need any work done for future projects. We use this in public involvement because it breaks through all language barriers, so it's a really useful tool for us. But what we call the TASSA Program, this is for non-motorized plans and projects moving forward in the future. $38 million of that, we have eight projects. The Board this month will be taking action to approve additional Category 9 non-motorized transportation projects that we have that will be coming up through the region. I seem to be missing some slides on here, so I'll be talking off the cuff. I apologize. Funding directly to the PSJA area or to FAR, we have $1.8 million on the 2017-2018 Category 9 program call for some programs and plans that'll be taking place there. So we're very excited about that. On the 2019-2020, it's $1.3 million for a tri-city pedestrian improvement program that's underway, Phase 2. And we're happy to say that over the time span of our pedestrian program, FAR's received $3 million to go to pedestrian projects over the last, since about 2017. So it's, it's no small amount at all. It's been very worthwhile. Some other programs of funding that's not necessarily part of the UTP process, but something that came out of the last transportation bill that we've worked hard on, we've identified almost eleven and a half million dollars to go to the FAR Bridge, well, off-site from the FAR Bridge, should I say, for a parking site? This is carbon reduction program money. We were able to make the pitch to federal highways that if we were able to have our trucks move out there and park and shut down, it would help reduce our carbon footprint to the area, so that's fantastic. About three hundred and seventy-five parking spaces. We'll be funding that, and we're working with your staff diligently. Also beneficial to the city, a regional signal improvement program. We've done this previously. We have more funds, about one point nine million dollars when we're moving forward with one hundred and thirty-seven intersections throughout the region. A heavy amount of those are in the Brownsville area this time because Brownsville, amazing to us, largest city in the valley, they had no detection system on their intersections. So it was the same if you were there at five o'clock or two o'clock in the morning. The lights just ran on a tiny, they didn't have any detection for that. We're helping bring them up and correct that for them. The south, oh, sorry, the Southmost Nature Trail over in the Cameron County area, about five miles of trail there, seven and a half million dollars. And then we're doing some bus berth cutouts that the city of Brownsville has identified on two-lane roads that are heavily trafficked that will allow us to move those buses completely off of the roadway, pick up, drop off passengers safely, and give them a berth to come back into the roadway, but not holding up traffic behind them, just sitting there idle. Again, looking forward to trying to do carbon reduction through the program. That's all I have on this. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to ask because I've got a personal slide, so before I get to that.
This is a failure with the three point six billion that the state is giving Tech Dot's getting, is it?
Part of it is that.
Part of it is that?
Yes, sir. And you know what? Since you bring that up, Commissioner, one thing I want to identify, let me see here. Oh, it's two hundred... The, the mayor worked really aggressively on this, so I can't skip it. IBTC, we've got two hundred and thirty-seven point eight million dollars that were identified through this program going over to that project to move that forward. And that was the mayor, of course, Terry Canales, Representative Canales and Chairman working on that, Senator Hinojosa. A whole lot of different irons were in that fire to able to secure almost quarter billion dollars coming directly. That will impact FAR, Donna, and the region because then that will facilitate getting the trucks off of the bridges onto a high-speed arterial, connect up to Interstate Two, and then from there, they can pick where they're going, but we get them away from the FAR area and away from homes and schools. So that's, that's a tremendous project that we have for that one.
That's what a lot of people at home know, that, that's basically to alleviate some of that Jackson Road traffic and all that two eighty-one traffic that everybody's real concerned about. I know it slows everything down.
Yes, sir.
So I'm real happy about, you know, state getting involved, and I know Amos had a big deal to do with that here, a big push.
Yes.
I want to thank Representative Canales and Senator Hinojosa.
Yes.
Yeah, because they're a big, big players in that part of the money.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Andrew.
I got one slide, I think.
Got it?
Go. Oh, there it is.
Okay.
So on a personal note, for the ninth year, and the city has helped us previously, and I appreciate that, and that's why I bring this to you now, for the ninth year, my club on this Friday will be doing our annual backpack and school supply delivery down to Carmen Anaya. I know that's a little south, but we have a lot of students there from the FAR area. We are meeting, if anybody is available and would like to attend, we'll be meeting at the HGB at the Corner Ridge in Cage. We're departing at nine, nine AM. We do have PSJA School District Police that will be escorting us because we never know. Sometimes we have six motorcycles, sometimes we have twenty. But it's a great program. We spent a good part of our day on Saturday stuffing, I think it was three hundred and ten backpacks full of all the school supplies that we got to list that they needed for all the kids. So like I say, this is our ninth year, and we're really looking forward to going out there, and I didn't want to leave and be remiss in, in making the invitation to anybody who may like to come out and join us for that because it's about the kids. They just, they have a blast, and we appreciate them. I, I scared my wife because she started this nine years ago with the school, and I told her in some of the pictures that we have that I hope she understood that some of those kids were now young adults. I didn't mean to imply she was getting old, but apparently that's how that was taken, so I'm just grateful to be here, so.
No, that's a really good event. I've been there with you before.
Yes, sir.
Several times.
Yes, sir.
And yeah, it is a great event, and thank you very much.
No, thank you.
We really greatly appreciate that.
All right. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Now, Udi will come up.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Yuri Gonzalez, Office of City Communications Director. For the record, our Parks and Rec Director, Sergio Alaniz, is not here today, but we have great representation. Assistant Parks and Recs Director Cynthia Castro, if you can please join me. Oh, you're over here. I'm like, where is she? So again, Sergio's not here, but this is just a moment that we want to take to wish him good luck, and we're excited. They're on their way to Denton, Texas, as we speak, to pitch for the Games of Texas bid. What does this mean? Well, many people consider this to be the Games of Texas, to be the Texas Olympics when it comes to youth sports and adult sports. So Sergio will be pitching, and this video we're about to showcase is just a visual aid or a support video to his pitch.
Welcome to the city of FAR.
From the moment you arrive to when you depart, FAR's community spirit will make you feel right at home. Texan hospitality is not just a saying. It is a way of life.
FAR offers a wide range of state-of-the-art facilities that cater to athletes of all ages and skill levels. The FAR Natatorium, a next-level Olympic-grade facility that can seat more than twelve hundred spectators to watch swimmers race down a fifty-meter pool with a depth of seven feet. Athletes can also dive off of platforms ranging from one meter all the way to ten meters into a seventeen-foot pool. The PSJA Stadium, a stadium that holds a full-sized football field surrounded by a running track with a capacity of more than twelve thousand seats. This stadium offers a vibrant atmosphere for fans, comfortable top-notch amenities, and breathtaking views. Tierra del Sol Golf Club is an eighteen-hole golf championship course that sits on one hundred forty-five acres of beautiful scenic landscapes. Stepping up to the plate is the FAR Baseball Complex. Experience the excitement of baseball in multiple well-maintained fields, perfect for tournaments, leagues, and recreational play. Not to mention our modern skate park and soccer fields that are primed for competitive matches. After a day of adventure, it's time to satisfy your hunger and stop by the local favorites such as Junction Cafe or Papado Seafood Kitchen. Here in FAR, culinary excellence is an art form in itself. You can also unwind at fan favorite places like Main Event for arcade games, or enjoy the latest blockbuster with a side of delicious popcorn at the Cinemark FAR Town Center and XD. Thinking about taking your golfing skills to the next level? Unleash your inner pro at Top Golf, the only one found in the Rio Grande Valley. Welcome to the city of FAR. We can't wait to have you.
This pitch is for two thousand and twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-eight. The city of Brownsville is hosting Games of Texas this year, next year, and I believe its College Station after that. So we're trying to, you know, pitch and hopefully host these great events. Cynthia, you want to elaborate? I don't know if there's any other questions.
Good afternoon, everyone. Cynthia Castro, nice to be here. Thank you for having me. And Udi, you pretty much said everything that we reasoned that we're there this year and hoping to bring back, or to bring the Games of Texas to FAR, two thousand and twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-eight. So hopefully we'll get those people to come over here and visit with us. Yes. John, any questions?
Any questions?
No, it's just make, my kids all went to the Games of Texas, so I know it's a big, big deal.
It is. It's a huge event.
A lot of people travel all over Texas to get there.
So I was looking at some statistics from the past, and they typically bring in about seven thousand to eight thousand athletes to this event, not to mention their families and everyone else that comes with them. So yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, it won't sound like this in Denton. I apologize about the sound. We will be looking into that. Thank you.
Next, we have Item Six, Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries. Just to go back real quick on some events or stuff that happened this weekend that I got a call, not a call, well, I got several calls from people about a, some of the food trucks that we've been, that have been popping up left and right around town. And I know our code enforcement went out there and was checking up on them, and we've got a lot of negative publicity on it, and I really didn't appreciate it. So I called Roland Gomez, who's in charge of our code enforcement, asked him what was going on, and he explained to me, obviously, everybody who opens anything around here has to come through permitting, and they have to follow the process. You can't do what you want here in the city of FAR. You shouldn't do it anywhere else in the valley. But I was very upset with people stating that, that they, how could the code enforcement go try to shut down a business, to try to do this, to try to do that? Well, people, you don't understand, there's a lot of people who have restaurants, and they pay tax dollars to open up a restaurant. They have the facilities. You cannot come into the city of FAR and pop open up a business without following the procedure. And if you're told to do something, you have to adhere to it. Those are the rules and regulations, and we do it for the safety of the people. From my understanding, there was, so I called Roland and I asked, I don't know Roland, I called him, and he said, well, some of the deal was, these people don't even have hot running water in the trucks. So how does that provide any type of safety for our community where people are gonna start getting sick? At the end of the day, I know, I mean, we had, they were sending, I don't have Facebook, but people were sending me the posts saying that we're being so cruel, that we should get sued, and we should do this. Well, I just wanted to let the people know that we do it to protect our citizens afar. You know, if you want to go week there, that's your business, but we can't take the responsibility of it. Our responsibility is to make sure that we find the best solution to take care of our citizens, and code enforcement goes out there and does their job. So I didn't appreciate those people on Facebook scrutinizing or defimating our code enforcement who are out there doing their job. And all I do, all I gotta say to Roland is keep up the good work. I know you're out there giving warnings, well, if these people aren't gonna listen, well, then maybe you're gonna have to be harsher and cite them, ticket them. Because to me, the safety and the health of our community is more important than somebody trying to make a buck. Okay? Thank you, Roland, for the great job, and commend your code enforcement officers out there that are doing a great job to keep up the good work. Okay? At this time, we're going to Executive Session. The time being four forty-seven, the City Commission will be entering into closed session in accordance with Chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code to discuss Agenda Items listed in the public portion of the Agenda pursuant to Sections five five one point zero seven one to five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero seven four, five five one point zero seven six, five five one point zero eight four, and five five one point zero eight seven. We'll be right back. Okay, it's five thirty-two, and we're back in regular session.
All right, we're gonna...
Regular agenda.
We're gonna move on to regular agenda. Item seven A, consideration and action, if any, on ordinance adopting and approving budget for the year beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-three, ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. On this one, we're, we're proud to produce a balanced budget with a one million dollar surplus. If you have any questions, Carla from Finance is here to, to answer.
Motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Next item, Item seven B, consideration and action, if any, on ordinance adopting tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four.
I moved that the, I moved that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point seven six seven six, which is effectively a twenty point twelve percent increase in the tax rate.
Second a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We all have to individually write or no?
No, not on this one.
Okay. Unanimous, motion carries.
I vote against.
So then it's...
Yeah, he just votes against. It's just one.
Okay, so...
Yeah, motion.
Motion passes.
All right. Item eight A, purchasing, consideration and action, if any, authorizing city manager to purchase additional fiber optic data center equipment for teamfAR.net from Calix Inc. through a sole source proposal in the amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy...
Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item nine A, contracts and agreements, consideration and action, if any, on memorandum of understanding between the city of FAR and South Texas College for continuing education units for emergency medical services and training.
Motion to approve? Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item nine B, consideration and action, if any, on agreement between city of FAR and the FAR Community Theater for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item nine C, consideration and action, if any, on renewal of cloud management subscription services for teamfAR.net from Calix Inc.
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item nine D, consideration and action, if any, authorizing city manager to renew contract with Building Dynamics for building services provided to the Emergency Medical Services Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item nine E, consideration and action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with the Texas Manufacturing Assistance Center, TMAC, the Rio Grande Valley, UTRGV for inventory control and standardization for the amount of forty-one thousand six hundred and fifty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for being here this evening.